Just a little background information, you may recall that I asked Mr. Fonda to take on this task, to take a look at our homeless situation in terms of the kinds of services that are currently being offered and where the gaps are and how we might fill those gaps.
Good morning, happy Monday to everybody. And I just want to first acknowledge the Task Force members themselves.
I think they're all here, wow.
A lot of them are here in the room, so I want to thank them for their time and efforts. It was a great group, very enthusiastic, and they came up with some good ideas, and I saw a lot of great energy in the room. It's a complex issue, and I think a lot of the folks, particularly those who don't deal with homelessness on a day-to-day basis, some of the citizens and the business owners that were participating, got to understand some of the complexities around homelessness that otherwise they may have not been exposed to, so it was really good in that sense. And they got to see how many things are already happening, not just here in the city, but county-wide as well, and some of our county counterparts are here, so I want to thank them for being here as well. So as I mentioned, it's a complex issue, and it's one that impacts really every metropolitan area in the country, and really I'd say most metropolitan areas in the world. I mean, if you've traveled around, there's very few places you can go to that are larger cities where there is not a homelessness issue, and West Palm Beach is no exception to that. Trying to figure out where we're at at any given time is a bit of a challenge, and one of the ways that we do that is with a point-in-time count that's done on a yearly basis. It used to be every two years, now it's yearly. Every January, a count is done citywide with the county staff and volunteers throughout the county to try to get a sense of where the homelessness issue is being impacted the most. And we did see, if you look at those numbers, we did see a slight decrease from 2017 to 2018. The numbers at the Philip P. Lewis Center have also kind of held steady, but you know, we haven't seen any dramatic increases from 2017 to 2018. So it's hard to get really a grip on exactly what the numbers are, and in a minute I'll tell you how we're going to try to do a better job at that here locally. But you know, every city I've been to around or looked at around the state has struggled with this issue. I've looked at similar cities with similar demographics and maybe a little bit slightly smaller populations like Sarasota, Daytona Beach, those areas have also struggled with homelessness. And if you look at areas, larger areas like Miami, City of Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and Tampa, obviously they have much greater issues than we do. So when it's not unique, you know, sometimes it seems like there may be some citizens who think we're the only place in the world that has homelessness, and we certainly struggle with it, as do other areas of the country and of the state. So the numbers are slightly down. Where you look at, where you see the largest numbers in the city of West Palm Beach are in the two ZIP codes that encompass the downtown West Palm Beach area and also the north end of the city around Curry Park, basically the ZIP code that encompasses, what is that, 33401, no I'm sorry, 33407 ZIP code. Those were the two ZIP codes where you saw the largest numbers in the point-in-time count. So one of the things that we're going to try to do over the next year and beginning in August is to do a census, a local census, and we've got staff from the Vickers House and Lisa Kemp, our community services manager that manages Vickers Houses here as well. So our Vickers House staff, along with our contract with Lord's Place, we're going to begin to go out on a quarterly basis and do a homeless census in these two ZIP codes, and we've mapped out the areas that we would be looking at. We're going to consistently go to the same areas during the same time of the year, and then we'll begin to get, I think, a better idea of how large or how small the issue is, and more importantly, what impacts our programs are having. And we can see a reduction over time, and we know we're on the right path. And that, again, will begin shortly, in the next couple, few weeks, we're going to do our first one, and that will be published online. We'll be mapping out exactly where folks are, and the public will be able to see on a map, basically a heat map, that'll show the concentrations of areas where there are homeless and what those numbers are, and we're going to try to, as best we can, get demographics, interview the folks, at least be able to see if they're male, female, any racial backgrounds, and other demographics that might be important. So this will give you a basic overview of the system that's in place now, kind of county-wide. So we have the Philip P. Lewis Center, which is the Homeless Resource Center on 45th Street, and that is a limited barrier homeless intake center. And it's a coordinated entry system, which is something that HUD really was harping on the last 10, 15 years, and that is to make sure that whatever services are being provided to the homeless are done so in a coordinated fashion, and that intake is done consistently, and that there's an intake process with the services then being provided to those individuals through that coordinated system. Philip P. Lewis Center's been open for, what, about 10 years now? Close to 10 years?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like a disco effect. And so part of that process is an intake and assessment. They currently have 66 beds at the Philip P. Lewis Center, and that is not enough to meet the demand. In order to be able to then be able to get folks into the services, there has to be a way to prioritize those services. And so there's an intake and assessment called the SPADA, which looks at different risk factors in order to score the individuals or the households, and that determines what type of service they get and whether they can actually get services. As I mentioned, there are 66 beds, but that's not the only option for most of the households. Most of the folks get other types of assistance. They could get rapid rehousing, which is basically temporary rental assistance, which generally lasts between six to 12 months. They may get permanent housing if there's something that happens to be available. There's also the options of getting hotel motel vouchers, which may be on an emergency basis, and typically those are just a couple of weeks, and I think those are typically for families more so than individuals. So there's a few different options, but there are some folks that they're not able to get in any of those options because they just don't meet the risk factors, and there's got to be, there's limited resources, you've got to prioritize it in some way, and unfortunately there's going to be some folks that don't get helped immediately. To help fill that gap, there are some other agencies that are out there doing their own thing, some nonprofits, some local churches at times will provide assistance to individuals to help them get housed through the Vickers House. We have our own programs. But the best way to do it is in a coordinated fashion as much as possible. I know the county is, you know, having discussions with them, they're working on some options of hopefully opening up another resource center on the south end of the county. We'll see if that gets through County Commission and all that process, but that will certainly help alleviate, I think, some of the pressures within the city, because we happen to have the only resource center, homeless resource center, is within the city grounds. Of course, we have a lot of churches and other organizations providing food assistance, clothing assistance, so there's a whole network out there. It's not always as coordinated as some would like it to be, certainly I would like to see it more coordinated at times, but there is a number of resources that are out there.
Armando?
Yes.
You know, it's going back to the other resources. I guess the question I've always asked, and I don't know if I've ever really gotten an answer, but is there, and I say this now, if I were to become homeless tonight, where would I go?
It would depend. Typically, the person's not able to get in that same evening unless there are some beds available. There are six beds that are set aside for kind of emergency overnight beds, and occasionally those may, they may be one or two available, but it's rare. So a lot of times when somebody's getting assistance through the Lewis Center, they may have to wait a few days before they can get in.
Is there any place that, I mean, and I've told you this, I think I've told you this story, but my daughter's a pediatrician. She called me up one night, one of her patients and the mother were homeless that night, and she said, "Where can I send them?" And I didn't really know how to answer that.
Yeah, and generally with the families, they're able to get them in with the temporary assistance through the motel or hotel vouchers, but it may depend on the time of the evening. You know, if it's 2:00 in the morning, it's going to be tough. So it just kind of, it just really depends on each circumstance, but I know they try to get with the families. Adoptive Family is the organization that helps run that side of the house at the Lewis Center, and they try to get the ones with children into motels as quickly as possible or into rapid rehousing. But it is a process, and just getting them into an apartment is a process. They've got a lot of barriers a lot of times, they've been evicted previously, and so just finding an apartment can be a challenge.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Just for clarification, what exactly does limited barrier mean?
I'm sorry, I'm glad you asked that. Previously, one of the things that the homelessness system nationally required was sobriety, and that you had to go through a series of hoops before you can get assistance. So a lot of those barriers have been reduced, both for common intake and the Lewis Center, but also in Housing First concept, which is let the person get their shelter or housing first, and then look at the issues that they may have, whether it be mental health or substance abuse, or whatever other issues they may have, work on those later. And so that's sort of the concept that they look at at the Lewis Center. They do have to abide by occupancy rules while they're there, but we're not asking for sobriety on day one. Sort of unrealistic to ask for, let's say, example, an alcoholic, you're not going to get any assistance until you never have a drink again. That's probably not going to work, and studies shows it doesn't work. So let me talk about some of the resources that the city currently has placed into homelessness. One of the things that I think has been one of the most effective programs that we've had is a peer outreach, and through the Lewis Center with some support from Vickers House as well, and Diana Stanley is here, where are you?
Through the Lord's Place.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Lewis Center.
I'm sorry, Lewis, through the Lord's Place. Diana Stanley is here representing Lord's Place.
Bless you.
And so we've allocated $50,000 to that program through our Community Development Block grant. And what that is, is those are folks who are going out and doing street outreach. A few of them are formerly homeless, they've been trained to do the outreach and engage folks. It's a long process when you're engaging the homeless, particularly those that are chronically homeless that have been on the streets for a long time. It's almost, it's for them going into a structured situation in housing, probably about as scary for some of them that have been on the streets for a long time as us going into homelessness. So it takes a long time to build their trust, get them off the streets, and they've had some success. Some of the folks who've been on the streets for a very long time have been taken off the streets and are in permanent housing right now. We also allocated an additional $50,000 for this program specifically for the Frequent User System Engagement Pilot Project, which is better known as FUSE. That is looking at those who are frequently utilizing services such as the justice system, they're being arrested multiple times, they're homeless, so they're interacting with the homeless system. They're also interacting with mental health systems and hospitals. We've identified, I'm part of that group, we've identified the top 25 basically utilizers of those systems. We're still working on the hospital data, that's a little more challenging to get, but we do have mental health data, system data, and we have the homeless, and we have the jails, the arrests numbers. So we're working on the top 25, we should kick those services off fairly soon, and I see our representative here from FUSE, thank you for being here, Jacqueline. So that's going to help, I think, with those 25, and those are critical because those are the ones that cost society the most in terms of dollars and cents, but also in terms of visibility. Those chronically homeless that are constantly cycling in and out of jails, constantly cycling in and out of mental health or hospitals, those are the ones you typically see on the streets, that they're most visible, but they're also the most costly. So the idea is to focus the services on those individuals, get them housed, get them stabilized, and the end result, hopefully, is you save money over time, because it costs a lot of money to have those folks on the streets, believe it or not. We've also allocated $50,000 to a housing stabilization program that provides temporary rental assistance, up to $3,000, and that's run through our Vickers House location. Somebody have a question?
Yeah, we had a couple of questions. Commissioner James?
Thank you. How do we identify the folks, how do we identify those 25 top users?
We've gotten, there's been, databases have been matched to then identify the ones that have, they're in the homeless database, they're accessing homeless systems, they've been arrested, is it two or more times? Three or more times in the past year? And they've had touches with the mental health system as well. And then we're working on the hospitals to get that data. So they've matched that data up to come up with the top 25 that use those three systems for now, a fourth one will be the hospital. So and then the idea is that the police department will have access to those, so if they pop up on their screen, when there's, let's say, doing a, either potentially an arrest or just interviewing somebody, and that person pops up, we'll be able to then redirect them to this type of program.
Commissioner Neary, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this slide is very helpful. From a quantifiable number, does a city spend roughly half a million dollars towards this? Or approximately?
Half a million, actually, no, we're going, I'll get to the next slide, we're actually spending more than that, because we're putting money towards permanent housing, which, in one case, we're putting a million dollars.
So we'll have an idea after this next slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, chief question?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Just to clarify the numbers that we're talking about as far as individuals, you said in the beginning 27% and 9%, is that of the total homeless population in the county?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, those numbers were the total population, and let's see.
And just what kind of numbers are the?
Yeah, 27% of the ones in the city are within the downtown, and then 9%, oh, sorry, 9% downtown in 2018, 27% were in the north end. The total numbers were close to 500 as I recall, oh, actually, right here, 462 was the total number for the city, and that represents 54% of the countywide numbers. For the largest city, we had the largest number of homeless, obviously, and we also have the largest number of public spaces and services, so we have the largest homeless population.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I missed that number.
Yeah. So I mentioned housing stabilization. We also allocated about $47,000 to a youth homeless prevention program through VitaNova, and those are for young adults who are 18 to 24. Homeward Bound, which is a program that we utilize to help folks who can reconnect with either a family member or somebody outside of the area, that program is actually allocated between $8,000 to $10,000, and it's not city funds directly, we're getting that from the bus benches that we have throughout the city, there's advertisement revenue that comes from that, and we negotiated the contract with the provider that some of that revenue comes back to the city for this particular program, really any homeless prevention program we want to allocate to, but this has been a particularly successful one. We've had, what, probably 60 or so this year, folks that we've sent back, or sent wherever where they can get housing. And we're working with the parking department, we're to get additional revenues, excess parking revenues, that's actually supposed to be coming to City Commission, I believe, at the end of July, so you'll be seeing that, moving some of the SX parking revenue into this fund, so we'll have additional money, hopefully, with your approval for that as well.
This is the money that remains on the meters when cars switch out?
Correct.
So that money is going to come directly to dealing with homeless?
Yes. So that's, and that's great, I want to thank our parking director for that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Vickers House, and as I mentioned, Lisa Kemp's here, that's five full-time staff, and they deal on a day-to-day basis with homelessness issues. They operate both the Homeward Bound program and the Housing Stabilization Program, and they just, they see folks who are homeless or in danger of being homeless on a daily basis. So some of the other things we've had resources into, the Real Change meters, the orange meters out in downtown, we installed those meters, we helped with the marketing. It's really meant to market for panhandling awareness, so folks are not providing funds to panhandlers, but they're putting in the meters instead. Honestly, it hasn't had the impact that I'd like to have. We're going to ramp up some of the marketing on it. That's a partnership with the Homeless Coalition, the funds go to the Homeless Coalition, but it's really wasn't meant to be a fundraiser as much as it was to be an awareness thing. So we're working on ramping that up. And then the housing part, this is the most important, we recently donated a duplex to the Lord's Place with five bedrooms, and those are all occupied right now, two females and three males. As a matter of fact, some of the folks that were living right out here were.
And that's the second duplex that we've.
That's the third duplex. We actually donated a total of 12 units with three duplexes to the Lord's Place, and so in the last couple of years. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can you just read out the website, because I can't see it up above?
Yes.
And so for anybody watching this, if you could just read that out.
Sure, the website for the Real Change Movement, which is the meters, and folks don't have to donate through the meters, they can actually donate at the website, is realchangemovementwpb.org. They'll be able to get information where the meters are located, what the initiative is, and also be able to donate there as well. So we have the duplexes, and that's been successful because it's, again, low barrier, you can get folks in quickly and begin to stabilize them, and hopefully get them situated in a more permanent housing down the road. We just donated a lot, and you'll be seeing on July 16th, Commissioner, a request for funding for $250,000 for Gulfstream Goodwill, and Ezra Craig is here representing Gulfstream Goodwill. That will provide six units of permanent supportive housing for developmentally disabled, new construction project. Most of the funds are coming from the state, through a grant from the state, and so we are providing the, kind of the gap, and the county's also assisting us with that, as well as his Quantum Foundation. So even a small project of six requires four different funding sources to put it together, so it's quite complicated.
Armando, we have another question.
Commissioner Neary?
Sorry, I'll let you get through this. These lot donations, which I think are great, but we're not just concentrating them in the Tamarind Corridor, are we? Is this across?
No, actually, most of the lot donations have been for homeownership projects. This is an exception. Most of the donated lots that we've done have been for homeownership through Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Renaissance, and other programs.
Yeah, I didn't ask that question, right? So, yes, familiar with that. What I'm saying is specific to the homeless issue. So for example, the duplexes that we've donated, is that citywide, or we?
Well, the duplexes that we had were not in the Coleman Park area, they were in, where were they? Pleasant City area. So most of it is, most of the city-owned lots and duplexes in that case were in the north end, so yes, a lot of it has concentrated in the north end, because we just don't have anything in the south end.
Those were the things that we had already owned.
Right. But it's a good point. So we're also providing a million dollars in funding, and we've supported the Dr. Alice Moore apartments, which that is on the north end, but a little closer to Northwood, so it's not, it's not in the Tamarind Corridor, it's.
What's the story on those? Are they moving forward, or?
Yes, they're moving forward. They're in, they're already gone, they already submitted permanent applications, and we should be pretty much good to go on that project. And that's going to provide 37 new units of supportive housing as well for people who would typically be in danger of being homeless. And some of those units are set aside for developmentally disabled, others are just going to be affordable housing, lower-income housing. Looking forward to that project, it took a little bit to get there, it was a difficult project to get through, but I think it's going to be an outstanding project.
Yeah, they're going to have to do some outreach and stuff with the neighborhood.
Yes, they will.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. So is the city doing that project? Are we building the housing and creating the infrastructure, or are we partnering with?
No, we're providing, we're providing home funding, up to a million dollars in home funding, and it's being done through a developer, nonprofit developer out of Miami, Carrefour, which is.
It's the Carrefour?
Very well-versed, and, yeah, and it's partnership with Carrefour and Jerome Golden Behavioral Health Center. We're also providing $300,000 in Royal Palm Place, which is the housing authority project that's under construction right now. It's almost done, I think it'll be done in October, that's lower-income housing, beautiful, I mean, it's the last phase, and it's come out fantastic. Little spelling error there, but support for an application, I helped write an application for funding along with the county and the county housing authority, Palm Beach County Housing Authority, for a mainstream vouchers, which is a HUD, basically a Section 8 voucher, but it is allocated specifically towards those who are disabled and coming out of institutions. That's at least where they're targeting it. So that would help us in some of the cases, because most of the homeless do have some verifiable disability, HUD's disability definition is pretty broad, so it would help us to be able to, in certain cases, help folks who are on the streets who may have some kind of disability, get them housed quickly. That's, we'll see if we get the funding, but you know, we did write the application. Of course, the police department, Chief Mooney's here, they do a tremendous amount of work and outreach with the homeless, they have an officer who's dedicated to that issue. I'm going to be traveling with Chief Mooney later this week to go visit a project that I'll talk about in a minute, and our EMT fire, constantly issues with the homeless that they deal with. So there's a lot of resources that are going into this issue just now, not just from housing and community development, but from other departments as well.
So if you would, you may have already sent this to the commissioners and myself, but especially those two slides, when people tell you that we're doing nothing to address the homeless issue, you can whip out these two slides and show it to them and say, "No, we're doing, what, a million dollars' worth of something to address the issue."
Yeah, well, that's just one project, yeah.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
On the very bottom, you mentioned the parks, library, and maintenance. Can you just highlight why you put that there?
Yeah, Parks Department obviously has to deal with a lot of homelessness issues, there's maintenance issues that come with it, people sometimes will try to access electrical outlets and tear those up, those have to be replaced, cleanup sometimes occurs on parks, and so there's a lot of resources that are, that have to, just around the whole issue of homelessness, that can be quite overwhelming sometimes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Have we been able to quantify that? Because I know that, you know, that's the cost side, even when you are not doing, you know, spending money, but that's an additional cost, have we been able?
No, we haven't, we haven't quantified the dollars and cents, but yeah, I'm sure it's significant, particularly when talking about police and fire intervention.
Right, right.
Commissioner James?
Can we get a copy of this powerpoint?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Soon as I'm done. So that leads to the homeless task force. Again, there were 16 organizations represented, and that also included residents and business owners, a very enthusiastic group, and they did a great job, and I'm glad I was able to be a part of that. We had four meetings that were held in April and May. The issue, as the mayor mentioned, was to identify what are the current resources that are there, try to identify some gaps, and then where could the city assist in filling some of the gaps, and then propose three to four short and long-term solutions, really a focus on those two ZIP codes, whereas we see the largest numbers, and then of course present it to the City Commission for your consideration. So the three areas that we focused on were housing and shelter, mental health or substance abuse, behavioral health as we call it, and then safety and security issues. And we had folks break out into teams representing those three areas. So some of the recommendations that came out that we'll be looking at in the next few months to figure out how to implement, one was the living room concept, and this is really a kind of a drop-in center. One of the issues that we have with, there is a nuisance type of, I guess, issue when it comes to homelessness, so whether it's the person with the open container, or the person who's exposed themselves because they have to use the bathroom, there's all kinds of little, these nuisance issues that occur around homelessness. And sometimes they may be misdemeanor offenses where they can be arrested, and sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're, they've been deemed as being something that is legal. But when there is a potential misdemeanor offense that's viewed, observed by an officer, one of the things we looked at is how do we redirect that person from an arrest situation into a more positive outcome? Because when you're arresting these folks, there are sometimes, as the officers will say, they may get back to downtown before the officer does, because there's just no room in the jails to be holding folks for any extended period of time for misdemeanor violations. So how do we redirect to a more positive outcome? And one of the things that we're looking at is this kind of drop-in center concept, where the individual, if they are potentially going to be arrested for a misdemeanor, you know, nonviolent type of situation, they could, they could be deferred to this drop-in center where they would be engaged for services. There are some similar concepts around the country, and myself and Chief Mooney are going to be going to Louisville, Kentucky on Friday to visit a similar concept in Louisville, Kentucky, and find out whether it's working there, and what the costs are, and see if we can replicate it in some ways here. Maybe we start small and see how it goes, but certainly something I think the police would like to see and appreciate because of the number of calls that they get on some of these nuisance issues that are really not solved by a temporary arrest. And frankly, these misdemeanors, they have to be viewed by the police officer in order to be something they can arrest for, and a lot of times, you're not going to see what the citizen's reporting, they're not going to be there at the time that it happens. So this gives us another option potentially.
So it would seem that this would have some similarities to St. Anne's Place, because...
St. Anne's is mostly providing more of that support through food or.
But they can drop in there.
They could drop in there, whereas the, I think the, and we'll see when we go to Louisville, but I think it's a lot more engagement.
Okay.
Yeah.
But maybe it's.
Maybe a way.
Maybe you build on.
Potentially. And well, and speaking of that, the other thing we could build on potentially is the Lord's Place has an engagement center that we can potentially build on that. The issue is expanding the hours and having adequate resources to have enough staffing there, because you really want to have at least some evening hours, otherwise it's really not effective, that's where most of the issues happen, so.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. So the Kentucky, Louisville, Kentucky project, is that along this concept of a drop-in center?
Yes, and they call it the living room, they tried to brand it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Community psychiatrist, this is a, we talked a lot about this, because there's always, trying to refer people to homeless people to services is a challenge, I mean, especially if they've been on the streets for a long time, getting them to go to an institutional environment is likely not going to happen, and having it in a. to an institutional environment is likely not going to happen, and having an appointment, I mean, it's just not realistic. So, trying to meet folks where they are, and that's what part of, that's what the outreach team does, meet them where they're at, engage them there, and so, trying to figure out a way to get a, get those mental health services to them. And we are doing it to some impact right now with our outreach team, because we do have somebody from Jerome Golden that goes out with them, but it's not a psychiatrist. They can't administer prescription drugs and try to stabilize them with medication. And that's what we really want to try to head towards. It's an expensive...
It might not even be a psychiatrist, but, you know, a doctor.
Well, or there's a, that's a nurse practitioner.
Somebody who can write prescriptions.
Which, yeah, there's still, the problem is, and there was actually an article I was reading yesterday, I think it was in the Palm Beach Post, about the availability of these services. It's just hard to get, there's not enough people doing these types of services nationwide. And so, getting somebody to not only be a psychiatrist or a nurse-practicing psychiatrist, but also be on the streets is a bit of a stretch, maybe, in the current, in the current environment. But it's something we should, we should look at and see if there's a possibility, even just for a few hours, just kind of a rough estimate, if we were able to get somebody for five hours a week, depending on whether they're a licensed doctor or nurse practitioner, would be $75,000 to $90,000 a year for about five hours a week. So, it's not cheap, but it really could help stabilize. Miami's done some of this and has been, gotten some success with people who have been on the streets for a very long time, being able to provide them their medications on the streets, and they become stabilized and become whole new persons. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
I was just going to ask if at the end you could go through and tell everyone a little bit about what the Jerome Golden Center does, what Goodwill does, and the Lord's Place. I mean, we hear a lot about them, but I'm not sure everybody really knows that they're in the community and what they're doing already.
Sure, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of providers, and thankfully, they were mostly represented at the task force. Jerome Center, Behavioral Health Center is, I think, the largest mental health provider in the county, so they provide mental health, substance abuse services as well. Lord's Place is one of our prime providers when it comes to providing homelessness service and reentry services as well for those who are exiting the justice system. Gulfstream Goodwill mostly serves the development of the disabled. A lot of them are homeless or potential for being homeless. I mean, you have somebody who's developmentally disabled, for example, whose parents are now elderly or pass away, who takes care of those folks? If nobody takes care of them, they generally end up on the streets. So, Gulfstream provides, not only that, they provide jobs and employment opportunities, as does the Lord's Place. And I already mentioned the Lewis Center and all the stuff they do, Adopt a Family, works with families that are homeless. Beat-a-Nova with the youth population, with a particular emphasis on LGBT.
Go on to your recommendations.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of folks doing a lot of things. This was kind of unanimous when we, in our group, is expanding the peer outreach team coverage.
I think we absolutely have to do that.
There's been some success with that, and so, we'd like to have some evening hours and some weekend hours, which we don't have right now.
How much time a week do we have now that people are going out?
We have two and a half full-time staff, so I think they're doing about, what, 20 hours a week or so between those two and a half staff? So, we'd like to expand another 20.
I saw that Rafael Clemente is here, and of course, he's got the Clean Team that's also supplementing the outreach as well.
Yep, absolutely. So, we'd like to, we'd like to expand the outreach effort and also have an easy way for the public or law enforcement to get in touch with them. So, that means a centralized number where you can call and get that person out there fairly quickly. So, it could be on-call or a mixture of on-call and being on the streets. The approximate cost would be about $50,000 to $75,000 in addition to the current $100,000 that we have. Some of that could be federal CBG funds, but we're going to have to, we want to do this, we're going to put some general revenue.
What's the future of CDBG?
That's always a question mark. We're doing okay for this coming year, but I suspect the following year, we'll see some cuts.
Yeah.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is under safety and security. Better coordination is a big one, I think. There was, we had the state attorney's office participated in this endeavor, as did the police department and the, excuse me, the public defender's office as well. And so, there was a lot of talk about really concentrating on some of the homeless that are not just a nuisance, but are really problematic, a criminal element, and identifying those and being able to make sure that those folks get prosecuted as much as possible to the extent that the law allows. And so, I know that our city attorney's office, along with myself, PD, are working on making sure that that happens as much as possible, that we get the folks who need to be off the streets, off the streets because they're a danger to society.
Commissioner Lambert, did you have a question? I saw your hand up before. No? Okay.
I already mentioned the Fuse Initiative, that's the 25 folks that we're identifying. Also, reentry housing stabilization pilot, I'm going to propose with our, some of our HUD funding, that we use some funds to help house some of those who are coming out of the jail system, who are resident, who are going to be residents of West Palm Beach, either one way or the other, either on the streets or somewhere else. So, I'll be coming to you with that shortly. So, housing and shelter, some of the recommendations was to increase supportive housing through waiting lift preferences and project-based vouchers with local housing authorities, or several housing authorities throughout the county. It's a bit of a challenge for them because they rely in some ways on the rents that are paid by the tenants. Tenants have to pay 30% of their income for rent. If somebody has zero income, that's zero revenue to help support their operations. And so, we've got to kind of work with the housing authorities on figuring out ways that they can provide some preferences, and maybe it's for those who are getting disability incomes. A lot of the homeless, believe it or not, do get disability income, but it's a small amount, $600 a month typically, or $620. It's not enough to pay rent, but at least it's some income that maybe the housing authorities could utilize. Request staff review of current land use and zoning requirements to allow for greater flexibility when we're developing affordable housing. And that's an opportunity to have more buy-right development, and that's going to reduce some of that backlash that you may get, like we saw in Dr. Alice Moore apartments, where you get a lot of pushback on a project that really kind of meets all the requirements, and they may have a small variance that they're recommending, but because they have to go to, they have to go to a planning board for those variances, it causes an opportunity to have that "not in my backyard" kind of mentality. So, that's something we can have development services potentially look at, at least, is is there a way to provide some greater flexibilities for certain projects? Maximize the leverage of housing and funding through collaborative efforts. I mean, there's a lot of private sector money that we're not tapping into, and, you know, as a city employee, I can't be going out there and raising private sector money, but there probably is a way that we could do a better job at trying to find private sector money to fill some of the gaps that may be happening in some of the programs or some of the projects that we may have. I mentioned it took four funding sources, most of them were public dollars, to do those six units. Maybe we can go to the private, somehow we can get to the private sector and have them donate, and $100,000 would have made a huge difference for that project, as an example, and it's not a lot of money to raise in the private sector. And then, more overnight beds, either through Lewis Center or other sources. I've been working with the county to try to expand the number of beds there. There's some challenges with the, with the space and maintenance of those beds, but hopefully we can overcome and add a few beds there, that I think it's important to not only increase the number of beds, but increase the flexibility of how those beds are used. Right now, it's kind of, has to be 60 used for between one and three months, and the other six are used for short term. I would rather just see them use it for what they need to use it at that moment. So, we're hoping to get that through the county in the next couple of months.
Commissioner Schoff?
Thank you, Mayor. On this slide, the thing that I wanted to look at was the "not in my backyard," because I know this tends to come from the north end a lot, to Commissioner Neary's point. And I think when we're looking at solutions to this problem, what I'd like to see us do is make sure that we're just not looking "all in my backyard." I think we're good concentrating our efforts and making sure that we're coordinating to meet people where they are, but making sure that we are not concentrating our projects in just one area, so that we end up creating the affordable housing area. I think by taking and mixing our uses of housing, it really helps to create stable communities the whole way around. So, and some of our efforts, I think, two of the words I hear are coordination and concentration, and I think those are really significant, but really important on how we're defining what we're doing.
Absolutely, and we want residents, whether they're living in affordable housing or non-affordable housing, to have access to a lot of the same amenities that other folks have, because that's part of being integrated into society. If we concentrate poverty in one area, it's not helping anybody. It's not helping the neighborhood, it's not helping those individuals. And so, the challenge sometimes is a market challenge, in that the available land and the cost of land tends to be less expensive, so that's where some of the concentration happens, but we can do a better job at that, for sure. We can find some land in other parts of the city where we can develop some projects, and we're trying to do as much as possible mixed income and not projects that are just affordable.
Sure, I know we tend to have a lot of city-owned property in the north end, and perhaps a solution to that would be to sell some of that property for home ownership and use, and use the funds of that to fund projects, etc.
Which we are doing. Actually, we've raised a significant amount of money in our trust fund doing just that. Absolutely. So, some of the other things that, well, this is housing and shelter still? Okay, sorry. All right, so we got past that.
I think, you know, if you go back, the last one, to me, is more overnight beds is just critical.
Yeah, no doubt, you know. It'll be between some expansion of Lewis Center and hopefully a new homeless resource center in the south end, because we, everybody who's homeless in the county ends up in West Palm.
There were supposed to be two more homeless resource centers, and if you look at the county's tenure plan, there were supposed to, by now, have been two additional homeless resource centers.
Yeah, I know they've identified a location for a second one. Hopefully, that goes through.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. To that point, for 10 years, the county started the tenure homeless plan, and what we don't have today has not been a function of not trying to get done, but to Commissioner Schoff's point, it becomes very difficult to put these facilities in any part of the city. It took years to get the...
Any part of the county, really.
In the county, really. And that becomes the real challenge, as to whether or not you put together big centers or whether you're putting smaller, you know, opportunities within various parts of the community, so it doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood. And then that, because things just don't happen because of not in my backyard.
Yeah, I really like sort of that more scattered approach, because it doesn't, number one, doesn't concentrate poverty, and it doesn't concentrate, you don't have that issue necessarily with the neighborhood, but the challenge is providing the services to scattered sites.
Guys, I worked in the disability field for years and years and years, and, you know, there was whole push for group homes and "not in my backyard," but the best thing we found out is smaller group living situations in different places, and that's the way we'll best serve this community. Warehousing them into big structures, it's not the best idea.
Most of the assistance has been through those scattered sites. I think the duplexes are a good example of that. Sometimes we have supportive housing, you may have to have a little larger project because of the support services needed on-site, but, yeah, generally speaking, absolutely, it works much better that way, and that's what we'd like to do. A couple of other things, very quickly.
You already went through those.
I went through this, I'm sorry. Keep going back to that slide. We are working on a, in a marketing campaign on panhandling. I recorded my part already, and I don't know, Chief, did you record yours? Chief recorded hers. So, we're going to get that out hopefully soon on our local TV station, and also working on print, social media, so folks understand it's not okay to give to panhandlers, but also, just in general, about the homelessness issue, and so, folks a little more educated about what the city's doing as well.
Well, and I think that there's also, I think the Lord's Place is also going to do a whole education kind of thing with the downtown...
Yes.
...community, the merchants and the people who live here. And I think the more people know about this, the better.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just recently met with the downtown homeowner, or resident association as well.
Good.
Home assist to work programs, the mayor mentioned the downtown development authority has a program through the Lord's Place with the Clean Team. I met, well, I'm not going to jinx it, so I'm just going to say I met with somebody last week that potentially will open up some doors in terms of providing work opportunities for those who are formerly homeless.
That's good, you know, and when people are trying to remind me that we need to do more about the homeless, I often see the homeless-to-work program that one of the cities of the southwest is doing. So, I would like to have more data on that, because, you know, giving a person a job is not the same as giving a person a home.
Right.
So, how many of those people who are working are living in a home? And how does that work? And, you know...
We can get that. I'm sure Diana can rustle that data up.
Yeah.
This next one...
They have to live in a house, they have to, they can, they have to be not homeless? No?
Not in particular programs.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Well, this next one, we're going to have to work with our city attorney's office and some other folks to try to look at, but basically, looking at the current legislation for the Baker Act, and then the Marchman Act, which is a little-used provision that allows for temporary detention for those who have addictions, and actually, Lisa Kemp has been working with one of those particular cases, have been to court like, what, three times now? Three times to court, and has had some success. So, we're going to talk to our city attorney's office about that effort and see if there's ways that the legislation can be changed. A lot of talk nationally and statewide about red flags. How do you identify red flags? Whether that's a kid in school who has red flags, or somebody on the street who homeless. Right now, there's not a good way legally to temporarily detain somebody unless they're a danger to themselves or others. Maybe we can look at legislation that would loosen that up a little bit and allow for some temporary detention for treatment opportunities. And then, the big one, we have a lot of folks doing a lot of great things, but it's not always leveraged and collaborated in the best way. And so, that's something that I hope this task force and other task forces that are occurring throughout the city can kind of come together and better leverage our existing resources, because we have funds going in a lot of different places and a lot of different slices of pie. We need to put those together a little better.
Thank you. Commissioner Schoff, you had a question?
I did. Two questions, actually, if I may. On the Clean and Green Team, I've had some questions from residents as to whether or not it coordinates with a reentry program, so folks that are going through reentry may have the opportunity to work for the Clean and Green Team as a ways to avoid a homelessness situation.
Well, it depends on what Clean and Green Team you're talking about. We have three of them. So, there's one downtown that's through the Lord's Center. There's one in the northwest that's through NCCI, and there's one in Coleman Park, Pleasant City, Northwood, through the Urban League. So...
So, maybe?
Maybe. I'll find out, for sure.
Okay. My second question goes to your last statement about coordinated efforts, and I think this is a prime example of what a great coordinated effort can produce. When we're looking at addressing our issues, I think probably some of the challenges faced by the groups in this room is that you don't know what you don't know. So, you don't know if you have someone who's coming into the Lord's Place and then the next day going into another program. Is there some way that we can start to look at perhaps a registration system, like an ID card, or something that helps identify folks without being too intrusive? I know going into...
We can't have, we can't have you speak from the audience. We are working on a community ID, which will be administered by the legal aid, and it will be available to anyone.
Okay, so this would be a way that perhaps organizations within this room would be able to tell who's getting services and where to try to coordinate those efforts.
Yeah, actually, and that actually does exist now. There is a, there is a system, HMIS, a client-track system, that when folks access any of the homeless providers, including Victor's House, that information is entered, so we're not duplicating services.
Okay.
Now, there is, you know, there needs to be better job with that, like there are certain organizations that don't use it as much as they probably should, so we need to do a better job, but there is, that system does exist, and we're actually looking at tying it into a couple of other systems in the future, including ones that serve HIV-positive clients, so that we're making sure, a lot of these folks are getting a lot of services, and they jump from service to service, and we want to make sure that they're not duplicate.
If we could try to use that as a way to regulate our services, too, because I know we have a lot of church groups, et cetera, that feed in the parks and that create some other issues surrounding that for the neighborhoods.
Actually, James Green, who's kind of my counterpart in the county, and he's not and he's not here today, but he is looking at working with the faith-based organizations on that very issue and having them get access to that system. So, when they're doing that, they're hopefully putting these folks in, and they, we can see where they're getting breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
I remembered my question. Um, is the Lewis Center the first stop or the first place? Like, Mayor, you were asking, you know, when you get a call from someone, is there one place where we can say, "Here's at least where you can call to find out which resource to go to"?
Yes, and I know, again, the county's working on a, on a, on a central phone number that they're going to be utilizing. Is that, is that done yet, Georgiana? Okay. So, they're working on a central number that any, anybody could call to get that person begin, begin that process?
That would be really good, yeah. That would be excellent. Okay, um, any more questions? Commissioner Ryan, this is the last question.
Thank you. Um, what I just wanted to point out is that the emphasis has been all over the, um, the downtown and the north end, but what we're seeing in the south end during the nighttime, because they're not getting as much attention, uh, they don't want the attention that they're getting in the daytime, is the impact all along the waterfront. And if you go down there, there, all of the homes are for sale, and then you talk to the owners, that's because of this activity. So, I, I only mention that because it's another opportunity to try to engage people in funding resources that address this problem, because